On my mic, Jeremy, can you hear me?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Haney. Councilmember Blatt.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Wierick.
Here.
Chairman McCready.
Here.
Vice Chair Adams. Akins. Oh, Commissioner Convery. Commissioner James.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hill. Okay. Okay.
Okay, we have a council in the quorum. Do we have a commission quorum?
I don't.
No.
Okay. Okay, well, we just require, we had the same thing with the planning commission. Okay, shall we?
Pledge allegiance.
There we go, there's our quorum.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Perhaps this pledge of allegiance, okay, we go into discussion. And I don't have any specific topics, so I'll turn it over to whoever wants to jump in.
Turn to the chair.
Thank you for having us here tonight. We're looking forward to a great 2018. Got some challenges ahead of us. Pleased that we will have an additional seventh commissioner, I'm assuming, eminently. And one of the things that we are looking to do is increase our social media presence. And so I think our new commissioner is eager to and capable of doing that for us. Because one of the things that, you know, came out in the Chaparral School discussions was just a lack of understanding in the community about why we have a historic preservation commission, once again, what we do, why we're here, why communities have one at all, and what our duties and powers are. And so, we're going to do everything we can in the new year to clear up those things, because I think it's better for all of us, because they keep repeating themselves. So I'm eager to have that happen. Also, we're going to be opening a discussion in our next meeting about the possibility of an historic district for the downtown core. And I understand, I think we're all well aware of the challenges that will present. But I think it's a valuable thing to pursue. And with that, I'll be quiet for a little bit.
So just one thing to go along with Chairman McCready, Gina is, like, into the population down at the flip tonight, and unable to be here for item number six to accept the commission.
That's okay, not a problem.
Just to let you all know.
Item number six? Yeah, didn't say that.
The regular city council.
Oh.
Different subject, yeah.
Yeah. So, or you're welcoming commissioners. So, yeah, Craig sent that to me just after, so I'd like Commissioner McCready and...
Can I hear you?
Michael, thank you.
I'd like Commissioner McCready welcomes having Gina on. She and her daughter have been attending the last several meetings, Historic Preservation Commission meetings. It's always nice to see people who want to be on the commission be in attendance at meetings beforehand to understand what we're doing. Again, we'll get to the point, I think, just to add on to what the chair said, the historic downtown has been mentioned as add-ons to the two that we did, this building and the Nordhoff Grammar School. I think we, I'd like to see further discussion on that with the council, because, again, this is something that will involve a large number of parties in going to a historic downtown district. It's been suggested that that go from the AT&amp;T building, which is just the other side of the museum, actually quite historic, all the way down to the Need Bakery area. And Nordhoff Grammar School is already a historic landmark, but would terminate on the north side to that degree. And I think that bears discussion in this meeting, because I would like to see us do that under the guidance and support of the city council, and with perhaps some discussion before we dive into potentially doing that. I just, I just think that needs to be kind of a joint effort. We need to get buy-in and ahead of time, so that we're working together, rather than... I appreciated during the Nordhoff Grammar School that I thoroughly felt like we had the support of the council in the deliberations that we were going through. I appreciated that. But I also think, in this case, we, I feel personally that we, it would be important to get council buy-in beforehand, before we begin on that venture. Other things we talked about were an annual budget request. We have term sheets that we've been going through for years now, it seems like, that will come to the council. And the other thing that was mentioned in our meeting, I don't see Cynthia here, was the Boyd Center. The mayor knows that we've been tracking the Boyd Center as a dotted line with the Park and Recs community to something that actually is very historic in our community for multiple reasons, especially for, as Commissioner Convery pointed out, the fact that it was dedicated to Jack Boyd, to the boy who died. And so, it has not only a name attached to it, but a very personal story attached to it. And so, you know, that was one of the things we talked about. I felt like, you know, two, three years ago, when it first came up on the Parks and Rec as that dotted line, I know there was a lot of concern in the community about whether that dotted line would be erased and the Boyd Center would disappear. I know that Sophocles has expressed his wholehearted support in keeping the Boyd Center, and I know our own Mayor Johnston has also emphasized that and mentioned it in council meetings. So, those are the couple of things that, that I remember.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
All right. A little more, I'm intrigued by your concept on the historic district. AT&amp;T to Need, I think you indicated it wouldn't necessarily be both sides of the street the whole distance?
Well, the AT&amp;T is on the north side of the street. The Need is on the south side of the street. One of the buildings in between that was mentioned was, of course, the Ojai Theater. Craig Walker testified in that case.
Right.
And that it did have historic content to it.
I'm not disputing that. I'm thinking of the Bank of America Building and the Westridge Grocery, for example, as well as, then you go all the way to Need, I believe that would bring in the Miller Places as well.
Yeah, down to Fox Street, and also Commissioner Convery suggested going down south of Montgomery, because there are several historic buildings there, one of which is county landmark. We've looked at it in the past on being a city landmark, also the fire station.
I just wanted to get to understand the, a little more specifics on the boundaries you had in mind.
No real specifics in between, just kind of a general outline.
And then extend, one would extend to Matilah at all, on the north side? Or not?
We haven't, we haven't gotten that far.
These are just all, just, okay. I don't want to get into the weeds, I just wanted basic, the basic.
And, you know, as in any historic district, there would be contributors and non-contributors.
Contributing elements, right.
So, perhaps the Westridge Market would be a non-contributor.
Yeah. And the other, the other...
Not to insult them.
Yeah. The other thing, just, just, you know, just have a discussion, is the relative merits of what we have now, basically, are design guidelines that could be extended for that area versus an historic district.
Yeah, would you explain for me the difference between design guidelines and historic district?
Yeah. I'd like to know that, too, I don't know.
Well...
Just briefly, because I'll look it up, too, but just so I know what we're talking about.
Well, there are design guidelines for the downtown core, of course.
But an historic district is, you know, adds protections for the historic buildings in
that district that go beyond that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm aware of that. But what does that imply, like, for example, they're remodeling the cleaners? Would, that's an old building.
Yes.
Would that have prohibited the remodel that's going on?
No.
No, okay, those are the kind of, that's what's going through my mind, yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, just to add clarity, it wouldn't have prohibited the remodeling, but it would have required that, that permit go to the Historic Preservation Commission, as well as the Planning Commission. So as the chair indicates, there's another level of scrutiny and protection, in fact, that is associated with a landmark or a historic district.
There'd be two commission reviews.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I'm following now, thank you. Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, one other issue that we wanted to talk with council tonight about is, and this is something that I've been writing for a few years now, and that is to add protections for the places on our historic sites of merit list. So, you know, I know there's discussions in the community about what that would be and what the encumbrance would be, and basically, it would be a review by the Historic Preservation Commission for improvements or changes to those properties. And of course, our goal is to make that as unburdensome as possible. But they do need to be protected at a higher level than they are now, which is zero. So, that's something that we've been pushing for, for years, and it's something we want to emphasize this year.
Well, I would definitely support that. How do we, what do we do?
Well, we would have to, it would have to be made a part of the historic preservation ordinance, I guess, for the city of Ojai.
Maybe an ordinance change, because there's no sites of merit in the code right now. There's nothing in the code about it.
But you have a list of sites.
We have a list, that's it.
Yeah.
There's a list that was never adopted by council.
And that was, what, a windshield survey kind of a list?
Well, it's more than that.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's a question, I was going up at the end of my sentence with my emphasis.
Yeah, the city of Ojai does have a historic survey that was completed in 2011, and all of the, all of these properties are mentioned in that list, but there are no protections. And by that, I mean, an owner of a building on the historic sites of merit could make alterations to it, which could significantly diminish the defining characteristics of it and not come before HPC.
Well, let's be clear, there is no sites of merit in the code. There's language that the Historic Commission adopted. It came before council and was debated, and the council failed, did not wish to adopt either the language or the list. And that's the current status.
And my understanding was that that was done in order to not make everything in town a site of interest and to narrow it a bit. But unfortunately, those who ended up on the list where, that was narrowed, then came under a sort of an informal scrutiny that, I know that one property out there by, what, not Bill Norrie, but right across, near the school on Ojai Avenue.
Across from Boku?
Right, yeah, that, that, you know, they were trying to clean the place up and repair it, and they ended up going in through, like, what, a year, year and a half process? I don't know.
Well, to be clear, there was some confusion with staff in terms of the, this whole sites of merit issue.
That's where I'm getting at.
Let me make it clear, too, that the, the owner came in and brought that issue, brought the issues up with the city staff on that property, and he cited that it was because of the historic sites of merit. That property is not listed amongst the 42 historic sites of merit. That property...
That makes it even worse.
There was staff confusion.
Not at all, because I was trying to figure out why he was so upset with us, and we hadn't done anything. That property was a part of the 2011 city survey that took place.
Right.
Okay? So, but not on the 42 historic structures of Ojai, I think it's listed. So, we noted in our meeting that Craig gave his second presentation on that on February 12th, 2000, or 2013. So, we've been talking about these for a lot of years. It did, as Councilman Wierick said, it did come before the council a number of years ago. There were, as a part, I think, of the term review that we're still doing. We just did that term review this last Thursday, and historic sites of merit were inserted, Mr. Summers behind me can verify that, were inserted into the terms that we discussed. So, it is still something that is part of the review process that's taking place with the Historic Preservation Commission. The other thing that is noted is that the historic structures of Ojai, these 42 items, are listed as a link on the, within the city of Ojai webpage, so.
Okay.
I can't, I can't remember, but each one has a defining architectural style, correct?
Yeah, they're very different.
And you're...
Like, Zobe or some certain colonial or some certain style.
Yeah, historical.
Style, yeah, architectural.
Been around for a while, important families, important architects, yeah.
Okay, Brian, when you say forty, did you say 42?
Forty-two.
Okay, 42, is that the extent of the sites of interest, or is there more than that?
Well, that's the...
Sites of merit, pardon me.
That's the number of sites of merit that existed at that time. I think since then, two of those have been moved over to landmarks.
Okay, so there's at least a finite number of places.
It started out in that newspaper article where everything that was built later than 1950, or before 1950, was historic, and I wasn't on the, at the time.
Right, I always say that I take a little offense to that.
We, we went up that...
I'm a pre-1950 construction myself.
We might have some tract housing that's older than...
Yeah, right.
So, I always question the age and saying, does that all of a sudden elevate something? Mayor, I have a, I have two questions.
Yeah, Randy.
So, the sites of merits were developed 25 years ago? How many years ago?
Oh, just a few.
The list?
Seven years.
How long was the list, how long did it take to procure the list and then actually bring it to council for discussion, three years?
We made, we made the list after the whole, I will call it a debacle, of the commission coming to council about five years ago with the notion of asking for an extra layer of review for properties older than 50 years. And we didn't pick that out of a hat, that's something that is typically done in communities that have Historic Preservation Commission, is 50 years. And as you know, that did not go well. And so, council said, why don't you put together a list of buildings that, you know, would be one layer underneath landmarks? And so, that's how we developed that list.
So then, the next question is, we developed this list, or HPC develops this list, and what have you done with it? Have you actually gone to these 42 sites and asked these individuals, would they like to landmark their property? Or are we waiting for those individuals to come to HPC to ask to be landmarked? What's, are they even landmarkable?
Yeah, or do they wait till someone comes to have a proposed modification or remodel and then be told they can't do it because they're under the umbrella of this, whatever we're...
They have, they have no enhanced protection right now.
Yeah. That was the confusion, man.
You see where I'm trying to go with this?
I do, so let me answer your question, Commissioner Haney. When we, when we held that meeting, the commission reached out to all of the 42 people that we were able to get ahold of. It's a public list, as I said, it's on the, on the city website, and we invited them to come and to be here. I had friends who were on that list and, and came just because they were interested in finding out how historic their house actually was. And so, we wanted them to be aware that we were, as Commissioner McCready said, basically trying to find a list of what we thought were 42 possibly historic, potentially landmarkable buildings for that list, again, at the direction of the city council at that time. So, again, we did try to reach out. And what did we do with that list? We brought it to council.
Well, I guess...
We brought it, term sheets, and basically was put on hold.
So, again, my, I'm just trying to think through this process, that, so you, I have a, I have a house that's on that list, and you approach me and, and ask me if I'd like to landmark my property, then it's my choice, A, or you can actually, can't you, as a commission, ask to have that property landmarked?
We can, but what I would do is, I would come to you, Commissioner Haney, or Mr. Haney, and I would say...
Councilman Haney?
Councilman Haney.
I've been called, I've been called worse, I'm sorry.
You may call him your grace, if you like.
If I'm handy, you can call me Danny, or you can call me Randy.
I blew that negotiation tonight. I would come to you and say, you know, Randy, we looked at 42 different locations within the city of Ojai that we thought were special. Your house is special. Let me tell you how special it is. There's this thing called an Ojai landmark, and then beyond that, there's this thing called the Mills Act. So as a part of the Mills Act, I can get a, I don't know, 25% discount on your property taxes for you each year? All you have to do is keep your property up. Are you interested?
Well, that's what I'm saying, all these people that you contacted, how many people came back to you and said they were interested out of the 42 at that point in time?
Right at that point in time?
Sounds like two.
Yeah.
That's what I heard, too.
Well, I think three, I think, I think Westways was on that list, too.
So, that's all I'm asking, and I'm, and what I'm trying to do is show this with the community, so that they understand the process, because most of us don't. So, I get that. It's still a joint venture. You can, as a commission, really evaluate something and say, yes, that's, you know, we think that's a benefit to the community if we landmark it, and then go through that process. Obviously, it would be an invitation and a discussion. Or an individual who's actually been cited could actually come back and say, you know what, I'm thinking that this is what I'd like to do, and what's the process? So, it's a, it's a two-way street, am I right? Is that, I'm just saying it simply.
Okay. So then, the last question is, well, I guess, so I understand that, and I think the community is...
I just have a comment. What we're looking at here is, is if somebody comes forward and wants to landmark their property, and it goes through the landmarking process, then there's restrictions placed on the property. The problem the council had with this list that was brought to us was, without any indication from the property owners, this was going to be a list that we were putting restrictions on their property, without any landmarking, without going through any of the process for landmarking. Just because it was on a list, and whatever that criteria to be put on that list was going to be, was, in my opinion, somewhat arbitrary. So, all of a sudden, they give us a list of 42 sites, and they say, we want to put restrictions on all these sites. Didn't make sense to me. I'm all for it if these are truly landmarked locations, but how do you have an almost landmark and expect the property owner, that's not going to have Mills Act protection, how do you expect them to agree, or not even not to agree, to further restrictions on anything that's done to the properties? That was my issue.
And there are administrative costs that get involved in all this, in addition to the commission that is reviewing it and the city council. And then, once you do it, if, if they're going to get a 25% break on the tax base, cities operate on a very primitive tax structure, but the cities do not have any authority over that tax structure, and so that's a reduction in income to the city. And the state's already preempted us on some things, which will be a reduction, so it, you know, when you put that, and then you add to it the possible cloud on the property, unless we get this really clear, it can be dangerous. I've seen redevelopment in the past, before they finally abused it to the point where the governor and the state took it away, where people ended up in, like, a redevelopment district, and as soon as that was put over their property, it was like a pall, and, but nothing ever came, came with that. So, there's a lot of...
And we don't ever want that.
No, I realize we don't, but inadvertently, when they, someone tells me that the case from last year, Richard, is it Kite, is that the, the owner?
Four years.
And then it turns out, he spent a whole year, and it was all on a misunderstanding, wasn't even on the, and that's not your problem, but it is a problem for the city to not do that. We got to be a little more careful.
And, and, you know, let's be clear, the site, the survey that the city had done in 2011, was completed in 2011, you know, does categorize properties as tier one, tier two, tier three, and, and the most important being that, for the top most important, that, that the community development department would recommend review by HPC. So, some of this is kind of already in there, if you will. And I don't like to use the word Councilman Wierick restrictions. I like to use the word review, or, you know...
I don't think I actually used that word yet.
I think you did.
But I don't think that that tier three, two, and one was ever adopted by the council.
No.
I mean, we never adopted that.
I know that the community development director in the past has referred to it.
Okay, well, we never adopted it.
Yeah, and then we, and that turned out to be, that turned out to be an error.
In fact, we specifically... We specifically would not adopt it. It wasn't that it was just not brought before us, or something was brought before us, and we would not adopt that list.
So, where I'd like to take this back to is, this downtown district that you'd like to create, and how do you plan on going about that and interacting with all of the different owners of the buildings? And how do you, you know, you talked about having council support. It seems like that you would want community ownership support.
Absolutely.
The individuals that own this property, you would want them first to be, to buy in, to see the benefit to them, versus council support, that's...
Absolutely. And we would have to have that.
Right.
It just wouldn't work, because we would have to approach all of the property owners in the proposed district, and they'd have to, we'd have to hold meetings and, you know, round robins or whatever you will, to spread the word, and, you know, if there was opposition to it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't happen. The reason our interest was brought to this by constituents coming to us and saying, hey, why don't you do this? So there is some interest in the community in it.
And were these constituents owners of property down there, or are they just general, you know, all of us folks who are trying to preserve the character of the town, you know? Or you don't know?
I'm not sure, I can't answer that.
Yeah, right, it's sometimes very difficult.
And my final question, has any property that's been landmarked ever been moved? Or can it be moved?
The, number one, the Ojai Number One, which is the old Presbyterian church across from the Nordhoff Grammar School, was originally over where the fire station is, correct? Councilwoman Francina, that's what I understand, it was moved.
It was where?
I honestly don't know.
It was on Ojai Avenue.
Correct.
By the fire, where the fire station is?
No, I don't believe so. I think it was the elementary school.
No, no, it was landmarked later.
No, that's what I'm trying to say, has any property, or, you know, been, has had the landmarking assigned to it, been moved?
No. Subsequent to being landmarked. Yes.
Can it?
Yes, I'm not saying it would be an easy approvals process, because one of, one of the, one of the distinguishing characteristics of a landmark is typically that it's in its original location. But, yes, I mean, technically...
It's, it's difficult, in some cases, the answer would be no, and in some cases, it would be like Heritage Square or something in Oxnard, where maybe you move stuff down and have a collection of historic buildings, but it's very expensive and it doesn't apply to everything, so. Bill?
I want to just, another distinction between design guidelines and historic district, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the rule of thumb is you need a, the 51% approval on a historic district of the ownership. Whereas, design guidelines, that just requires a majority vote of council.
Majority of what?
Majority vote of council.
Oh, okay.
To adopt design guidelines. I mean, I think there's a distinction there. I just wanted to point out that if there's a, you know, there's, there are two different types of decisions, and they have different pluses and minuses associated with them. But it might be that if the community strongly felt that certain design guidelines were needed, you, you know, the council may adopt that, even though 51% of the ownership may not agree. Just as an example. Just wanted to point that out.
But is one of the benefits, Darwin, that if you have a district, then what you call contributing and non-contributing buildings are all within that district that maintains the character of that district? Is that kind of the idea?
That's right.
Yes.
As opposed to individual buildings maybe saying, oh, we, we come under the guidelines, and so we'll do it this way, which destroys the historic...
I agree.
Yeah.
Just, just pointing out the distinction.
No, no, there is definite difference, yeah.
So I have a question, I'm kind of feeling like, your question, was it chicken and the egg, Councilman Haney? So, do we want to get some buy-in from the council before we go to the community? Or are you saying we should go to the community before we get buy-in from the council?
My take would be community first.
I agree. I do.
Okay.
So, that's where I would start, I would at least, again, through your commission, at least have, post it, put it on your agenda, and have a discussion, and see how many people are actually...
And that's my problem.
That's how I'd approach it.
Wasn't that the way you did the Terramina? Didn't that come from the residents?
Yes.
That came from the community.
Yeah, right.
Definitely.
That was, that was community-driven.
The Nordhoff Grammar School came from the commission.
Councilman Haney, you're, you're exactly right. Councilman Haney, you're, you're exactly right, and that's our next step, and that's what we're doing, we're putting it on our agenda as a discussion item, so.
Well, we can, I mean, speaking for myself, I'm definitely in support of exploring it and really looking at it. I think it's definitely worth considering, because, you know, looking at the whole nature of our, our downtown, it makes sense to have a look at it.
So, so that brings me back to the other item that was mentioned, and again, as Mayor Johnson knows, and many of you may know, is the other item that was brought up in the meeting and has been discussed for a number of years, is the Boyd Center. So, in order to do a historical resources report like we did on this building and on the Nordhoff Grammar School, we came to the council and we asked for funding within the budget. And so, I look at that as, as wanting to ask you for money for items that we feel are a priority. As I mentioned, for me, two or three years ago, when the Rec Commission came out with their plan, and the Boyd Center was a dotted line, the Boyd Center was a high priority to me. Now that we have the assurances of Sophocles and the mayor, that it's a high priority for them, I'm just, my, my only question is, again, I'm a numbers guy, is the risk minim, lessened to where we would want to spend money? We're asking for the city council on some other possible item within the possibly forty-two historic structures of Ojai, so.
Well, I'm not quite sure what I just heard, but it sounds like a potential budget request for the spring to be considered with all the other things, including the Thomas Fire, as to where we are. And my concern would be that we not be doing anything that would leave a cloud over properties unless they were a very high priority, just because we are not getting to them yet, you know, creating an expectation or obligation that if it comes from the property owner, you know, that's a big step in the right direction. We just approved one not too long ago, a property that I was quite familiar with, because I lived on it, you know, forty years back, and my son and his family lived there, and they, the descendants of that family, but the property's been, was a, a plotage, or a very large plotage with acres, the Wilson Property, and they, they came. The front house did appear to be restored, but the rest of the property, I was thinking, you know, in a lot of jurisdictions, we probably, they probably wouldn't do that for an historic building. I don't have a, a big problem, because I think it's in the old Fairburn Estate, it's nice that we have the, at least what people can see, but they can't even, most people can't even see it from the street, it's so far set back, and the guest houses and the outbuildings and all are totally different. So, when, you know, it's, to me, it's a, it's a complicated question, and it has to be almost site-specific as to, you know, kind of the cost benefit of what we would be doing.
In this case, the city's the owner.
What?
In this case, the city's the owner.
No, no, I'm speaking in general for its forty items on the, on the list. Anything that, if I understood the, the question is, is are we interested in seeing that and then spending money to proceed, you know, reviewing that list and getting more detail on it?
Well, my real question was, again, very much going to what you said in priorities of the money, especially with the Thomas Fire impact. I reviewed Rudy's budget, look forward to that part of the meeting tonight, very well put together. But what I'm saying is, we, we think, you and I, looking at each other, think the Boyd Center is fairly well protected.
Right, because we own it, right.
We own it, you, you have control on whether Parks and Rec can do that or not. So, to me, then, is it a priority to spend money now to do a historical resources report? When we own it, we feel like it's protected. But for the community, again, they, they may not have seen what we've seen over the past couple of years, and they are definitely clamoring for a historical resources report and for it being deemed a landmark as a priority.
Well, you're, you're asking me personally, because I think I've already kind of declared myself, but again, it goes to cost and what the competing interests are at the budget time. I would put it up at the top of the list, but I haven't seen the rest of the forty-two, so, do you put it at the top of the list, Bill?
As I said, I did two to three years ago, when it was a dotted line. Now I feel it was a dotted line in the layout on the Parks and Rec, you know, it was that dotted line that went halfway through the new building and halfway out on the parking lot.
Oh, okay.
And so, now I feel, yeah.
Well, you feel it's less threatened?
I feel it's less threatened.
What do you think, Randy?
Brian usually looks at me when he's talking about the Boyd Center, so I'm like, come on, Brian, give me some eye contact.
Here we go.
You know, it was interesting, because I was there this weekend, you know, walking my dog, and, you know, I just keep thinking of the gymnastic program and what it means to this community. And I keep thinking about the fact that we have a great recreation and basketball program that doesn't have a gymnasium necessary to conduct all its classes in. So, I was looking at the back of it, saying, God, could we just attach another gymnasium back here? Listen, I'm, I'm going to do what's in the best interest of the community, and I truly believe that this community deserves a, a new multifunctional recreation center. How we achieve that, it's going to be up to the community. That's why I was just asking, that's why my question led to the Boyd Center, or not to the Boyd Center, but something being landmarked. For instance, I keep saying this, that, that I'm not for tearing that building down, I'm for actually relocating it, just like it was relocated to the site. And I think that there's a number of parcels in this community that we could actually look at if we chose to do that. And I think we need a cultural resource center. I think we need something that's dedicated to the Native Americans in this community, which they don't have. They may have a part of the museum, but they don't have their own cultural center. So, for me, that's always been my, my trade-off. Let's take something of value, let's create something else of value, and let's give back to community, again, as something of, of value. I also said at that Recreation and Parks meeting, or at the council meeting, it, there's a fifteen million, if not twenty million dollar budget on that. I don't see that happening. So, there's got to be workarounds, there's got to be ways that we can still create the environment that I'd like to see for our children. And in fact, I even said this to Mayor Johnson after the meeting, was even utilizing the school properties. You know, there's a multitude of ways of providing children better access to better recreation and to better education through our recreation programs.
So, we're, we're sort of mixing two issues. One is...
No, we're talking about landmarking.
No, no, we're mixing, you know, we're, we're talking about two issues, and they over, they overlap. One is the budget, as to whether or not a fairly small amount of money relative to the development of gymnasiums and that other sort of thing, but they are budget questions. So, I'm not sure how we answer the question on the Boyd Center. I think everybody around the table probably has maybe a little different point of view on the priority, but if you're asking me, my feeling is, is that it's a very significant, probably one of the last significant buildings, and even in its location, it, there are, it is a building, I don't know, when that, you, you probably know the answer to that. When was that building moved there from next to it? We used to call the Bank of America or the Bank of Italy building down at Libby Park. That goes way back, right?
Thirties?
I think so.
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven? Says the lady who rewrote the book.
Okay, well, so fifty-seven. So, so we've declared a historic district for Terramina that wasn't even built in fifty-seven. That, that building not only has a history, but it's been in that location and that particular street scene, or what do you call it, elevation, I guess, in architecture, for more years than other places in town. So, and that's just personal opinion, it doesn't mean anything until we get into budget or until your commission were, you know, to request of the council to do something, but...
So, so, Brian, Darwin, if you were asking me, I would take it back to you that it, that we as a council would look for your direction in how you prioritize and what's the criteria that you would use to set one, two, three, four, five, and so forth. And let us look at it and come back to us.
Okay.
And we can do that.
That's what I would say on that.
Yeah, and so people aren't confused, I'm all for protecting the Boyd Center. Have been for, ever since that dotted line came out. And, but, and I love your ideas on relocating it and using it as a, for cultural resources, I think, that's just fabulous. But again, I'm a financial guy, and so I, I not only weigh priorities in one sense, I also weigh, and what's the most important thing to do with your money at the moment?
Right.
So...
Right.
Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarity, I think everybody at the table, but for those at home as well, the adopted master plan for Searzadi Park maintains the, the existing Boyd Center at that location. And if I recall, it had a specific language added into it, protecting it and ensuring that that be part of the plan, so.
Yeah, that was a stipulation in the adoption of the master plan that the majority, well, I think it was the unanimous adoption of that stipulation by council.
And that's kind of what you're queuing off of, isn't it, Brian? You're saying that that relieved the dotted line anxiety that you had.
My dotted line anxiety, yes. And so, my financial acumen said, okay, well, maybe I can bet on something else.
Right, yeah. Okay, Steve?
One other item, going back to the discussion previously on the, the sites of merit, I just want to make clarity that about eighteen months ago, it was made real clear with staff that we will not be using that list, and so we are no longer applying that in any way shape or form to anything that's coming over the counter. Just wanted to make that clear.
Okay, since we don't have an agenda, and we've talked up to this point, I would suggest that maybe we adjourn the meeting and transition to get ready for the council meeting, that, did you have something else, Brian? If you do, go ahead.
One other thing, in representing Commissioner Convery, she noted she had recently been, recently been on the City of Pasadena website, they had revamped that, and now have just wonderful history of the City of Ojai community, or City of Pasadena community.
I was going to say, how very nice of them.
I was wondering where we go to get information, now we go Pasadena.
I've been camping, camping with very young grandsons for the last four days in Tismor, where it went from eighty-six degrees to sixty-one in a matter of four days, so.
Tell them thanks for putting them on the website, yeah.
Yes.
As chair, I'd like to thank council for the support that we've received from you in the last year, especially with regard to the landmarking of Chaparral. I thought that was a good team effort. I, I would like to have had stronger landmarking, but I'll accept it, and look forward to the new year working with you guys, and thanks for your support.
Anything else for the good of the order?